And I'm gonna go live on Facebook. Okay, we're live on Facebook now. And the video is recording a couple of minutes and we'll get the meeting started. Bill Rannam, I see you joined us, just to make sure, are you? Got it? Do you have audio yet? You're muted. Oh, try again.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, it is six o'clock. It looks like you've got your board members here. So just a few things, this is Todd Schmidt, Wantakees Village Administrator. So for our meeting tonight. No, get back to where I was. For those attending as public, you're automatically muted. The meeting host, I'd be able to unmute you when, when called upon during public comments. And there is a public comment section, including the agenda, that's specifically for items not on the agenda. And comments are limited to a minute per attendee. And there's a raise hand function down at the bottom of your screen when that item opens up, or when Chris opens that item, raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and I will bring you in. If you're on by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand as well. For the board members and then the presenters, you're also muted. Please remain muted unless you're participating. And board members, keep your cameras on. We wanna see all of your wonderful reactions. But others who are participating in the meeting, keep your cameras off unless you're also participating in an item. As we've been doing with board, when the board has discussion, President Zellner will call each of you individually for comments. And then all the votes will be taken by roll calls, so unmute during the voting process. With that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Okay, thanks, Todd. I'm gonna call our village board meeting for June 15, 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
Nyla Frye, here. Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Yeah.
Bill Rannam.
Here.
Kristen Rungy.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here. Okay, first item we have is our confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability. Caitlin.
The draft agenda was posted in the Wantakees Tribune on June 11th. The final agenda was posted at all three posting locations on June 11th. And the final agenda and the file packet was made available online on June 11th.
Okay, thank you. And the first item is consent agenda. We only have one item, so if, was anybody that wants that polled? Seeing no hands. I'll look for a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda, which is the checks for the week.
Motion by Phil. Second, by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Nyla Frye.
Aye.
Kristen Rungy.
Aye.
Phil Rannam.
Aye.
Chris Zellner.
Aye.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Aye.
Gary Hertzberg.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have our public comments. For anybody who'd like to make a public comment on an item that's not on the agenda for this evening.
So I do, I show three. In as attendees at the moment, Chris, no hands are raised. At the moment.
Okay, now, I actually have a comment to make. For our next board meeting, I'm gonna be proposing for this public comment section. So it'll probably end up being on the agenda before public comment. Something that's kind of not sat well with me for some time. And I'd like to make a recommendation to you, and I'm just gonna point out right now that we're not having any discussion on this tonight. I'm just putting it out there for you. The way our public comments work currently is people can make comments at us with no response from us. And that's for items that are not on the agenda. For those that are on the agenda, our public can't address us, other than if they were to send us an email outside of our board meeting. So it is my intent to recommend that we change our public comment section to include items that are on the agenda as well. Limiting it to two minutes for any comments. And during that public comment time, we won't be able to still address those individuals. But when we do have our discussion later on about that topic, we could then discuss it. That's really the only change with it that I'm proposing. And we'll see that next, next meeting on the agenda, and it'll be prior to the public comment section. So if we choose to implement that, we would then go with the public comment section as presented at that time. Okay, Todd, any other public comments at this time?
Nope, last call for hands raised? And no.
And I see that Brian Kleinmeyer is on here. I would just maybe just say, Brian, is there any? Anything you'd add about the public comment part?
No, I mean, the, the process that you identified that you would like to have discussed at the next board meeting and potentially adopted is something that other communities have done. And so it's certainly within your discretion to move in that direction, if that's what you so choose.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then let's move on. First thing we have is license permits. Brian, Caitlin, do I need to read each and every single one of these, or can we just do it as a whole?
We can, we can do it as a whole. So tonight, up for approval is our annual renewals of liquor license. Included on your packet were the 21 license applications. If we would like to improve them all at once, I do have that recommended motion language that I can share with the board. But at first, is there any questions on any of these license establishments? They've all been reviewed by the police department and are recommended for approval by the clerk's department and the police department.
Okay, I'll just go around quick and ask if anybody has any comments. Nyla, Frye?
No.
No. Aaron Moran?
No comment.
No Rand?
No.
Phil Williams?
No comment, review them all, they're great.
No, we're good.
Kristen Rungy?
Also good.
Okay, Caitlin, if you wanna read that off, and then we'll have somebody with the motion.
Yep, motion to approve all alcohol beverage license applications, subject to conditions as presented. Complete application submission, possession of current seller's permit, payment of outstanding liquor bills, and payment of all outstanding bills or monies owed to the village, including a renewal alcohol beverage license application.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Kristen Rungy, second by Nyla Frye. Any other comments? I'll look for a raised hand for comments. Seeing none, roll call vote, Caitlin.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nyla Frye, yes. Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Rannam.
Yes.
Chris Zellner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Yeah.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, and then under new business, we have discussion and update regarding COVID-19 pandemic. Todd? I'll leave that to you to start with.
Yep, and I'll, I'll tag team with, with Scott as well. The one thing that I did include in your packet this time was the results of a resident impact survey that the village ran from April 27th to May 20th. I would wholeheartedly admit that this isn't a scientific survey. It's not something that I would suggest making, taking results and making a policy, a specific policy decision as a result. But it more gives us a little bit of a flavor for what some people are thinking. The, we had 108 total responses. So again, definitely not a wide representation of the village, but just simply a tool to fill us in on what people are thinking. If you read through it, I'll share just, just five things that seem to jump off the page, particularly from the written comments that you might have seen in there. And I think, as I've talked to people just anecdotally, this sort of rings true. And a couple of them are questions, and then a couple of them are our, our statements. One thing is that it seems like that people have chosen as their primary source, if they were looking to get information, the village's website. I also read a couple of comments that they found it a little difficult to track down the info. So one thing I'm gonna do tomorrow, I'm gonna take a peek at our, our main page and make sure that it's, it's completely clear when you go to the homepage, even though there's kind of a alert link at the top of the page with a red, red kind of flashing button. But I'll make sure that there is clear direction to get to our page that's been updated regularly with all the COVID updates that are relevant. Also, I sensed a lot of questions about wanting to know how businesses are being helped, how our business community is going to survive. I can tell you that just today, I was on a Zoom call with members of the Chamber of Commerce. We are talking about how to take the rally, Rally Around Wantakee program that you saw earlier in the pandemic. That baton essentially has been handed from that rally group to the chamber. And we're talking how to take that brand or that, that rally sort of program that was put together and turn that into a business, a business tool now as we come out of the pandemic. What can we do to strengthen the local economy and rejuvenate our local business in this? So we've got a number of ideas, just started talking about that today, likely under the auspices of Rally for Wantakee, or Rally Around Wantakee. So working on that with the chamber. And then the other thing that clearly was, was communicated was just generally fear and anxiety. And I think that translates to probably some mental health and relationship challenges and all that, that goes around being confined and being uneasy about things. So we heard that pretty clearly, I thought, from some of the, from some of the answers. The one thing that I also saw a few, several times is desire to know what the infection rates are here. And Scott, I might call on you. The question is, do we know the exact number of cases for our zip code? And is, is that updated, or do we know the exact number for Wantakee? I've heard the answer from you before, but how do you answer that question?
Um, that, that's not something that's tracked, mainly for HIPAA and privacy purposes. Public Health does know that number, but they don't make it public for, for certain reasons. What we do track is it's more of a heat map concept as far as the symptoms that mimic COVID. So we do get heat maps as far as that's concerned, and we do have a few of what I would consider hotspots in our district. But we've been real lean, real leery to put any of that information out, knowing that it is community spread. And we don't want people to have an, un, trying to think of a good word, we don't want people to think that they're more safe if they stay away from those sections of the town. With this being community spread and the amount of asymptomatic patients out there, we want people to assume that they can catch it anywhere. So long story short, those are numbers that are being tracked, but not being sent down to the local entities to be able to.
Okay.
Anywhere.
So that, that's the answer to that question that we heard. And then the other question that seemed to be clear is, when is this gonna be over? And I don't have the magic eight ball or the, the crystal ball, but any other observations, again, not for policymaking necessarily, general pulse or, or other thoughts on what you've heard from the community in general beyond what we read in the survey from many board members?
So I'll just go around and find out from the board members. Kristen Rungy?
Yeah, I, I'm wondering if, because with regards to people wanting to know what's happening specifically in our community, I wonder if we have a statement on the website that we're under the, I don't wanna use the word governance, but the Dane County Health Department is our go-to for that, that we don't have our own health department. So some of the comments that I was reading in the survey were probably better directed to the Dane County Health Department than the, the village, including how many, you know, cases do we have in our zip code and things like that. That was my only real observation is that there, you know, we really rely on the Dane County Health problem and for good, or Department, and for good reason, rather than doing some of this ourselves and duplicating services.
And above and beyond just relying on, they, they are the, essentially the health law agency for the village in that we don't have our own health department. But I can make that more clear on some of our online materials.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kristen. Phil Williams?
It was refreshing to be out and around the day. I saw kids playing basketball, tennis, pickleball. The playgrounds were being used. It was great. And in reading their, the comments there, everyone was saying, why can't we play basketball? Why can't we play tennis? Why can't we be on the playgrounds? And they're on it now. The other comments that I thought were interesting is why can't we have somebody babysitting their children so they can go to work? And we had to shut down all that stuff. So it's kind of interesting to see both sides of every comment. If one would say we're too strict, another would say we're not strict enough, and, you know, it was all we, all around the board. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Gary Hertzberg?
No, I don't have any comments.
Nyla Frye?
I would, I was out, out for a walk today too, and it was refreshing, like Phil said, to see people playing, one person playing basketball and seeing some children out. But one thing, after reading the Tribune, when I got home Sunday, a person did an article in the Tribune, or the the editors, or the
Editor, yeah.
Talked about how she's immunocompromised and how, you know, she would like people to respect her and keep their distance, you know, when they're walking and things. And, and it's like Phil said, everybody is at different levels of their comfort zones and things. And I just hope that everyone, as they have been, be respectful and be patient with each other and continue doing the job that we've been doing to keep each other in a comfort zone and safe.
Okay, thanks, Nyla. Aaron Moran?
Well, I don't have any comments.
Bill Rannam?
I noticed that when I looked, read the survey, it looks like there's four different ways about evenly distributed for people to get their information. And that's gonna be tough to get a whole, I mean, which explains a lot, as far as I'm concerned, as far as people don't seem to know how to, what's the standard at present. I do think the virus will come back, partially because we're all active. I don't think it's, it's in any way over. And, and it's gonna be an extremely discriminatory event that we have, because if we're, we're looking at, the kids are out and the kids don't suffer when they get it. It's the people like the immunocompromised that are gonna suffer again. So unfortunately, there's not one size fits all for the information, and that's, that's what makes this whole very difficult. And hopefully, we can keep it together. But I noticed that television stations were 25%, radios about 25%, the newspapers 25%, and online was a little bit more. So that's frustrating, because you have to go to four venues to get the information out. So, anyway. Thanks.
Thanks, Bill. I don't think I missed anybody. I'll, I'll just make one observation. There's a lot of conspiracy theorists that are in our world and what's happening with this. And this question's actually, I'm gonna have a question for Bill and Scott, maybe you'll have an answer for it. There's a lot of conspiracies in regards to that the numbers of deaths are inflated as they're using COVID as a, let's say, excuse. So somebody who may have cancer or a heart attack or something that they're, they had COVID, and they're clumping them. Maybe you don't have to answer that. My point is that if there would be some sort of fact versus myth, that's a solid one that's out there that we could have, because that, all that does is, I think, cause more fear and panic in our community. But not just our community, but across the country, world for that matter. I just say that our healthcare providers, I think, are on top of this. They're doing their very best to get this done as quickly as possible. We're trying to take as government officials, just like those above us, take the information that we're being given by those professionals and making the best sound decisions we can to protect the population as a whole. Some of those things are painful, not easy for, for a lot of people. I'm one of those people that wants to be out on all those public spaces that we've have in our community, whether it's the parks, to our community center, to our library, to all those. We want those things to be open as, as the elected officials, because those are things that we're involved in and invested in on a daily basis. So those, those are my comments, just looking at the, some of the comments that were in there. You know, open it up, open it up, open it up. Another saying, close it down, close it down, we're going too fast. I'm not sure which one of you said that, but that's right. You're gonna have both sides of that coin right now. And I think that, you know, what we've done so far is prudent in making sure that all the citizens are safe, as well as making sure that our healthcare workers have all the equipments that are needed. And I've heard that they've learned a lot about the, the disease at this point and what they can do into the future. Making sure his treatments go. So, Bill, you'd know more about that too, and Scott would know more about that, but that's probably not, this isn't probably the venue for it, maybe, but maybe it is. So I'll leave it at that.
We know the treatment is better, we are much more active, the plasma thing probably works. The, the meds are probably questionable. The, it's like everything else that's happens, there's a group that wished it didn't happen. That probably, if anything, the COVID deaths are underreported, in our world anyway, because if somebody died, especially, generally, these are elderly people that have died. And we, we know their previous diseases, and putting COVID down was not even a possibility until recently. And you have to send in a separate form to do it. So it's actually more difficult to be listed as a COVID death than, than, than other deaths. So probably underreported, but that's, that's where I, that's where we're sitting with it. We didn't turn in the forms, because we know what they are. Didn't change the person's thing.
Scott, did you want to spend some time filling us in on an update?
Um, honestly, you guys did a pretty good job. The main update, obviously, as you know, phase two started today. You're seeing pretty much everything open back up right now. The big thing that, from public health that we're trying to push through is that it doesn't mean this virus is gone. By no means is the virus gone, like Dr. Rannam said, it's gonna be coming back. If not just as strong, possibly stronger this fall, as we're out and about and starting to let our guard down. So make sure when you go out, like Nyla was talking about, that you're still doing your due diligence, wearing your mask, social distancing where you need to. Just being smart and being cognizant of others and other people's viewpoints. As far as the numbers go, there's 965 confirmed cases so far in the county, and that's out of 55,000 that changed that were tested. 178 of them were hospitalized and 30 passed away. Those are really the important numbers. Right now, again, even though we moved up to phase two, it's kind of interesting that we've had the highest average of new cases per day over the last 14 days at 16. So that's, that's still a pretty big number, and nobody really knows if that's because of the exponential testing that's going on right now, or if it's starting to spread a little bit more, and nobody's really quite sure. But definitely, just because we're out and about a little bit more, don't, don't let your guard down at all. It's gonna be a long summer for all of us. I think it's nice to be able to get out and get going a little bit. I know I have myself. But again, just be smart, throw a mask on. I know they make some pretty nice ones to wear these days. Wash your hands, good hygiene, and I think we can all kind of get through this together.
Internally, I could talk a bit about, or actually, I'll call on Caitlin, because she helped with the policy. We've, we have adopted a few global policies that are, we've determined administratively are critical for our village operations and our departments. Caitlin, do you want to do a really Cliff Notes version of the messaging we sent out?
Yep, so today, we published or sent out to all staff a baseline COVID policy for our response plan and coming back to work. Also stating in there that this just sets the baseline for our operations. Some departments may implement policies that are specific to their building or their operation, but this is, nothing can be less stringent than what we sent out today. And it includes, I'll just go over kind of headers of it. Employee symptom screening and temperature checks every day when you come into the office. Making sure that we are taking those temperatures, and if an employee is sick at all, that they are encouraged to stay home. Also giving the supervisor the right, that if an employee appears to be ill, to send them home. Talk about returning to work if you have a case of it, lays out the parameters of when you can come back to work. Encourages the use of PPE and social distancing in the workplace. When members of the public are interacting with us, it is, it is imperative that employees wear a mask or a face covering when they are interacting with public, just to protect us and the public from us. Talks about the use of gloves and when, when they might be appropriate. Says that we maintain social distancing in our offices. No, we all love each other, but no handshakes or hugs right now. Then it also talks about employees visiting each other's facilities and how we want to limit that and really keep buildings together. But, you know, if it can be avoided, avoid exposure between each other, we should be doing virtual meetings as much as possible. And it also sets our parameters for employee travel. All work-related travel purpose policy is only, is permitted only if it's essential. Essential is if it's required to maintain a certificate, certification or a license related to your position. But we also are also encouraging employees to seek virtual trainings that would cover for that. And then it also deals with if an employee decides to travel personally outside of the state. All of you were sent that policy language, so if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to Todd or I would be happy to answer them, or if you have any questions right now.
Ask a question? Yeah, are we gonna ask or require members of the public to wear masks when they come into buildings? Because I mean, it's a two-way street. We don't want, you know, our, our village employees, you know, have such a potential to be exposed accidentally, because I don't believe anybody would ever intentionally to this.
Mask wearing is strongly encouraged for members of the public. We have also installed Plexiglas, we will be installing Plexiglas around all counters at our village places. The places where face-to-face interaction happens most regularly will have Plexiglas installed. I can speak at Village Hall. When we do open up, we will have a station, you know, we have the two sets of doors in Village Hall. There's the station between those doors that will also provide hand sanitizing for members of the public and paper masks for them to grab if they're not wearing a mask when they walk in. So face masks for the public is being strongly encouraged when they come into our buildings.
But not required?
Todd, can we require face masks in a public building?
I know when we were talking about this with the team last week, my vote was to use the words require. But I think there was some, a little bit of pushback, and probably rightly so, about people who may have complications in wearing masks or people who may feel that they have the right not to. That may end up becoming, you know, that might be more of a legal question. I don't know if we need to get Brian's official opinion on that, but we air it on the side of strongly encouraging. And the messaging also will be loud and bold and clear when people do enter the building, the signage and the spacing requirements and the mask-wearing encouragement.
I would be interested in, Brian, can we require people to wear masks?
I would say, I mean, I haven't looked, I haven't researched the issue. I guess the way that I look at it is there, there's probably a strong possibility that you could, and the reason I say that is because we've had our Village Hall closed. My understanding is for, you know, a number of weeks because of the
my understanding is for you know a number of weeks because of the virus and obviously we had the power to do that and if we have the power to close it I would think that we would have the power to require people to wear masks I I do you know and for what for what it's worth I do think that you could run into some people complaining about it you know cuz I have heard people say what Todd had said which is in particular certain people believe that it it causes issues for their face if they have a mask and so you know it may be you know one alternative is to say require unless somebody is able to demonstrate a very good reason for not wearing it
the other thing we're doing is we're gonna can what we learned in in this is that we're very capable of doing a vast array of our interactions with the public remotely and generally it's worked pretty well so what we are gonna be encouraging people to do if they're comfortable to keep engaging us that way as long as there is this public fear in place that do consider sticking to the remote method of interacting with your local government
all right well I'll go on record saying it's not so much to me a fear but a legitimate risk and I it's not my decision obviously but I would prefer we air on the side of safety for our staff but that's just my opinion yeah you guys mean a lot
any any other comments thank you Kristen
I I look at it as we want to keep our employees safe and and it's a working environment and that's something that's being stressed whenever you hear about covid is keeping workplaces safe and I would think that that would be one way of doing it
thanks Nyla Brian I would I would ask in Caitlin to follow up on Kristen's comments what do we do for our election coming up is that gonna be a case where it's potential that we're requiring face masks for those who are coming in to vote because we have volunteers that are in there and a lot of those volunteers are in that very susceptible age group so would that be something that we would I I don't view that any differently for our village employees that we need to make sure our village employees are safe just like our volunteers are safe I don't I guess that's that's how I'm looking at this is there anything has there been any guidance given out at this point from elections
so the guidance guidance has not been updated yet since April all the guidance that the Wisconsin Election Commission published in April which is the same guidance we're following right now we're planning on setting up and administering this election the exact same way we did in April I'm sure we're gonna be getting cuz we're getting closer to that to that August election I'm sure we're getting updated guidance and it's our plan that we will follow that guidelines as best as possible if the Wisconsin Election Commission and the the board or the election commission wants to make it required that people wear masks to vote we will do our best to make sure that residents choosing to vote in person are are wearing a mask Brian do anything I don't I don't I don't know if we can require voters because it's a constitutional right right to vote that if they're not wearing a mask they can't come into the polling place I don't want us to have that fight on election day
I yeah I I think it's and that's the reason why I think you need to really rely on the guidance from the election commission on that issue because I do believe that it's it they're different issues I I do believe that it it there could certainly be a scenario where you as a village because you own the Village Hall and the Village Center and other places that you would have the ability to require people to wear masks when they enter for all of the reasons that have been stated during this meeting it goes to a different level though when you have a constitutional right to vote and that's where I think it's so significant to rely on what the elections commission you know the guidance that they've provided in the past and will likely provide in the future
Brian when you say that we own the Village Hall don't the people in Village Hall
well no the Village of Wannakee is a governmental body owns it and now you represent the people but you actually own it
okay other comments
all right we will we will take that feedback and I what I sense is kind of a strong feeling on a part of the board about employees safety as we continue to finalize our plans at least for the Village Hall opening which we plan in some form on July sixth and we'll share that with the other departments as well tomorrow
okay all right thanks for everybody for your comments thanks for being here again tonight Scott I appreciate all you're doing and we're gonna let you go if you want to get going thank you all right next we have discuss and take action on next steps related to tolerance and inclusiveness in the village
just a couple yeah a couple quick introductions and then couple items one we had put out the working statement and and that was a good start and I'm guessing that some of you may have heard a little bit of feedback I saw some feedback on social media and what I'd like to do is bring up that working statement again on the screen and as we continue to work on it I would like to ask whether you would see any changes at this point and then related to that I know we want to engage the public in further dialogue and helping us confirm what our statement on the subject is so I'd like to talk about whether we could reasonably work to consider perhaps a zoom solution to starting to have some some public comments so I know we we kind of sat back on that at the last meeting and sort of said that we the best type of communication is face to face human interaction but but perhaps there's not that type of need to to wait but so I want to talk about that too but is that okay Chris if I bring up the working statement and we take a look at it again
yeah I'm gonna basically be proposing that we have a special village board meeting on the twenty ninth of this month I believe that's the Monday it's the fifth Monday of the month Todd correct me if I'm wrong on that but I believe we have five this month and
what was that again Chris
the the last Monday of this month I believe is the twenty ninth is that correct
yes
which we don't we shouldn't have any meeting scheduled because that's the fifth Monday
that's fire for a couple of us
yeah
it is fire okay so I'm trying to figure out a time for us to have basically a board meeting that this is the topic we're not gonna have any other topics to discuss so we can devote time for it specifically so that was gonna be one of dates but we can
one thought on that Chris we did schedule a village president listening session trying to find the date when we set that one thought might be to have have that rather as a listening session on all topics make it a a session about race and tolerance and inclusivity do you have the date on that
I might have to pull up an email
I'm not finding it at the moment anyway while while maybe you'll pull that up
that up and find it
I do have that statement back up again Kristen did a nice job getting this started for us and I I just want to ask whether there's feedback at this point after a couple weeks have passed where you'd like to see some edits while still leaving it as a working statement for the time being
Todd you can go around the room or around the board members and ask if they have any comments or anything else they'd like to add at this time
okay Gary Hersberg
you know Todd I I don't think so at this time I want to make sure that when we talk about inclusive we talk about all races and I don't know how we make sure we include that in the verbiage
so you're everywhere where it mentions race it certainly is implied but if it could be if there is stronger language you could think about that Bill Random
none right now it's I'm always one it's my language skills aren't as good as whoever wrote this that's for sure I was wondering if we believe the the Wannakee should be an inclusive community might be the lead on the whole thing but it's obviously
oh you mean appear in this part
yeah I mean that this this that we believe segment is pretty strong and sort of is directed towards what Gary was saying there more than some of the others cuz I think we'll find this has got to be something that's inclusive not just of race it's you know gender identity all the other things that come in so
okay well the the board definitely wanted the statement about race to be loud and clear a couple weeks ago as we were dealing with that incident right here in Wannakee but I I get you I get your point Erin Moran
um yeah I I'm glad that we started this and that we could get it out I would like us to maybe add something about inclusively to those who are disabled or regardless of someone's ability or accessibility
so that would probably be probably we mentioned I we go through sort of a a list of those categories twice in the statement I believe so I see and I'm just this is just I'm not I'm not finalizing wording here I'm just putting in things to remind us about as we work towards some more final language but and and down here we'd identify it okay anything else Erin
no I'm good right now thank you
Kristen Rungy
yeah so I so we were asked to respond to that particular incident and I think that we have found that the community discussion is we need to condemn that incident in particular and also we need to have a larger statement about inclusion probably as part of our visioning process as well as whatever comes out of the meeting we'll have later this month so so I'm up I'm up for crafting it in whatever way the community feels we don't really have a lot of board members or I mean a lot of community members on and with our structure until we allow people to comment on the agenda I feel a little bit like we're we're kind of feeling our way towards something that we seem to want more feedback on from the community which is great that that the community is involved in that the one thing that I did want to ask that is not necessarily related to this but is related to the larger conversation that's happening in the community is I wanted to clarify okay I thought that was my dog for a second there so I wanted to ask you know or point out or clarify you know the school board is going through a similar process with regards to the high school in particular and we did ask for a seat am I correct on that on the that committee Chris and they didn't respond affirmatively but told us that we could apply individually I know I didn't put in an application because I did not want to take that from somebody who has a child in the school district my kids are graduated anymore but I'm wondering if we couldn't knowing that some of the problems that we're seeing in our community are you know overlapping these two entities we have Wannakee as a village in the Wannakee Community School District as a larger population and a larger geographic area I'm wondering if we can revisit with the school board and again approach them to formally ask them to reserve a seat for for one of us to be appointed
what I can say to that is we didn't we didn't formally I guess you want to call it a formal request from the village board for a seat is not what happened but I don't remember the particular dates earlier in May the the I personally asked the school district once by email and then once during a phone call with Chris about whether that would be a possibility and I think my what I mentioned in our last meeting was that the response was that not not necessarily to say yes absolutely but more that they were the district was eager to establish a good cross section of the community specifically there was an ask to try to get senior representation and then I connected the senior center up with them to perhaps suggest some folks so that and I didn't push the issue beyond there
okay okay I it would be my preference that and I'm saying this knowing that I probably couldn't be depending on what my work schedule is I couldn't be the appointee but I think that we're based on the listening sessions that I've attended we're gonna see a lot of crossover between what is happening with students and what is happening in the larger community and to have a member on that board might ease a lot of whatever the action would be going forward that that we have some cross representation so but that's beyond me to ask as being the soul I obviously I can't make that ask myself but I put that out there as an idea
well I'm we did we did list this as discuss and take action on next steps related to so unless Brian disagrees if the village board collectively wanted to formally make that ask by action of the board I could I could do that for you in terms of following up with the district
Brian you you have the ability to act tonight based on the reason that Todd just identified it does say discuss and take action so as long as your action is related to next steps on this agenda item you you definitely even though there's not a recommended motion or even a motion section you can you can do that of your own deciding
and the only other thing I'd add to that is that we're we're not excluded from being in the room these are gonna be public sessions available and accessible and and that was certainly mentioned to the to me when I made the request that you know we're able to be there we're able to to listen and to the extent that we're even called upon I'm sure we'd be willing to participate but it's not a closed door meeting by any means
okay
at least that I I don't understand it to be a closed door meeting I don't know if that makes you feel better or not
thanks for the information
so still still continuing Phil Williams
oops
you're on
I I think I I paused or something I I I like the statement I I'd like to see physical disabilities mentioned in there somewhere and other than that as far as getting on a another committee I don't know that I could do this
okay thanks Phil who did who did I miss Nyla Nyla Fry
I think disabilities would be a good addition and I also think economic status should be added to that list
okay that's I saw that comment on on some chats as well and I agree Kristen you do realize I'm gonna call you after this meeting tell me word properly word smith this all right and thanks Nyla and Chris Eleanor
my only comment I I agree with everything that's been said other than I did find out it's either the eighth or the sixteenth of July we haven't pinned the day yet but it's one of those two
okay and if you find that not to be soon enough then I'm happy to work with all of you to come up with another date for a special meeting what what time of day is the fire commission
six thirty
are they usually what an hour less
about about an hour or so
I mean Chris if you wanted to we could plan let's say a seven thirty meeting we can plan to have it recorded available for a couple fire commission members arrive a couple minutes late that's fine but I'm guessing that it'd be pretty close to seven thirty
I'm I'm okay with it we could also look at I I'm pretty sure we have very few committees that meet on Thursdays I could be wrong on that but I don't think we have a lot of committee meetings on Thursdays
so you're thinking like the second or the twenty fifth
yep more like the twenty fifth second might be a little tight with the fourth of July for people that still may be going out of town so I'd say the twenty fifth if we were looking at it
just opening up my whole screen here so I can see it so for the board members on here by a show of hands, is the 25th a day, an evening that would work for you?
Yep.
I see thumbs up.
Of June?
Yes.
June.
June. The Thursday.
Yep.
Okay, it looks like that's doable for everyone. So we will, 7 o'clock, Chris, would that be?
I'll work with you. Start a little earlier than that. I'm thinking 6:30. 7 o'clock, it's, it could get late for some people too. So I think 6:30, let's try to start there.
Okay. And unless there's other conflicts that we learn about over the next day or two, we'll look to that. Otherwise, we could go fall back to the 29th.
Actually, Todd, let's, I mean, I want to ask the board members that. I mean, typically with staff too, we try not to put our meetings late, late into the evenings. So even 6 o'clock might be the most appropriate time. So board members, I'd like you guys to weigh in if 6 o'clock, if that seems like a reasonable time. I'm just going to go around quick. Nyla, is 6 o'clock reasonable to you?
Um, I would, 6 o'clock is reasonable, but I'm wondering if 6:30 would be better for more people to be able to attend.
Okay, Phil?
6 or 6:30 is fine.
Kristin?
6:30 or even 7 for members of the public, knowing that dinner hour is that, for a lot of, but it's good on my schedule.
Bill?
Either, either's good.
All right, let's go with 6, well, sorry, Gary?
Yeah, either's fine.
Okay, and Erin?
Yeah, either one's fine, but 6:30 maybe still people can attend.
Okay, I saw Nyla put her hand up.
Question, is this going to be an additional board meeting or a listening session?
My, my vision is that this is going to be a board meeting that has one topic.
Okay.
Has, has a public hearing.
Correct. Brian, we're good with that, yes?
Yes, you can choose to have a public hearing.
And of course you can disagree with me.
I, I'm aware of that, but I, I know that you can have a, a public hearing.
All right, thank you. Okay, so let's, let's post that date, Todd, then.
Okay, Caitlin, let's connect tomorrow on that with agenda item.
Sounds good.
Okay, anything else with that issue for this evening, or this issue, or should I say that, this issue?
I would just add that, that words, words definitely aren't enough, and I'm guessing that all of you would agree with that. I have been participating, there's another call tonight at 7:00. I hope to get to as soon as I can. I've been participating in the Zoom calls that a group in Wanakee has been coordinated, coordinating, and I notice they've, I'm not sure if this is technically their, the confirmed name, but the, the Wanakee Area Neighbors Committed to Equity is the title that is on the 7 o'clock Zoom call today. So I'm guessing, I think there may be working on some other ways to engage the community with, with sort of a theme. And, but I'm following along in those meetings. Kristin, you may have been at one or two and definitely interested in what the community is looking to do. I would add that Erin and I were at the Create Wanakee Committee Meeting last week, and we spent, we spent a good half hour talking about ways that we can engage the arts community or creative people in highlighting matters of social justice here in Wanakee, sort of similar to the way that the the boarded up walls of State Street were turned into art that became messages. And we have some ideas that you may very well see pop up right here in Wanakee in the next couple of weeks. So little steps that we're trying to, in addition, doing the, the word smithing, I like us to also be acting in unison. So we're doing a few things like that. Okay, we're also talking internally with our staff team on ways that we can address this issue for our own team, training opportunities and things like that.
Perfect. Thank you, Todd.
Okay.
Okay, did we need to take any actions then? Kristin, did you want to take an action with regards to representation with the school?
Um.
I mean, you can make a motion, and if the other board members wanting to do it, that's, I want, I don't want you to feel shorted, but.
I don't think this is the last time we're going to talk about this topic, so let's, I'll ponder that for a bit, and maybe bring it up the next time. Just because I know we're all pressed for time.
Okay, Gary?
Chris, I mean, to me, I like Kristin's idea because, you know, a number of meetings, we've had the public say, hey, you guys need to be in, working closer with the school district. And, you know, we try to, and this is, would be a great example of, you know, if we don't get a member on this committee, the public may come back and say, see, there you go. Again, you're not working with the schools. So I'd rather us have a person on this committee. And I know we can all attend the meetings if we'd like, but it seems to me it would be a a more streamlined message for the schools and the village if we'd work together.
The, the only extra context I'll add to that, in the school district shoes, keep in mind that they have more than just Wanakee as a jurisdiction they serve. And sometimes the decision, if, is extended to the, the village, also then quite appropriately must be extended to the numerous townships, along with the city of Middleton, who are also part of the school district. And then you, then maybe they get to just a size issue. So for what it's worth.
So I think that Todd's right in us stating that, or in stating that we can absolutely participate, be part of the meetings, watch them on Zoom at this point. I don't think it's a bad idea for, if we wanted to designate a person to report to the board during our Zoom meetings, what took place for those who maybe didn't have an opportunity to view the Zooms. Maybe that's a good thing for you to do, Todd. You do such a nice job with board setup, so I don't know, it's just something that we could think about.
I think my best answer is I serve at your pleasure. I'll certainly, regardless, I'm certainly going to be following all the, the work that goes on with the school district because I'm, I'm interested in how they're going to be working through the tough issues they've got. We all do.
Now, just say, Gary, thank you for pointing that out. Kristin, thank you for bringing that up. You're right, we, we absolutely want to be working hand in hand with our school district on this topic. It's just unfortunate we weren't able to be set at the table right off the bat, but we can absolutely participate. And I think we're going to do our own work and we're going to do a great job with this. So.
One more question before we close this. Do we know who in the school board is in charge of the committee right now or chairing it?
I, I think it's Mike Brandt.
Okay.
But I'm, I can't, I can't say absolutely for certain.
Okay. So like, it would be appropriate to address a question to him and probably, like, if I had a question about how could the village board, what might that look like?
Oh, on your own behalf, sure, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Thank you. All right, let's move on. Next, we have discuss and take action on strand engineering task orders related to construction services for Heritage Hills subdivision, Cup Road and Arboretum Village. Kevin?
As introduction included with the packet was the task orders from Strand to really, you know, to be part of our team and assist us in the construction management. We got probably the largest construction projects going on in 25 years with throughout the village. It's probably a good time to be getting construction done because the traffic is, has been slower. So really, they're going to be focusing on helping us with the, the Heritage Hills project, as well as the Arboretum Village and then the Cop Road reconstruction. And then our staff internally, you know, Jim will be overseeing anybody that's, that's helping us on that. But then our, our staff will be focusing on the finishing up the Ganser development, the forward development project, our sidewalk improvement projects, as well as our 2020 street improvement projects. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Phil Williams, any questions?
I'm ready to make a motion if you would like it.
Okay, no questions yet? Okay, so you can make your, I'll leave it for you. You're going to get the motion. Kristin Rungy, any questions?
No questions.
Gary Hertzberg?
I think it's a great idea based on the amount of work we've got going on.
Phil Random?
No questions.
Erin Moran?
No questions.
Nyla Frye?
No questions.
Phil Williams?
That being said, I make a motion, we approve the stand, strand order test orders 20-4 and 20-5 relating to 2020 construction services for private construction projects, the cost of which will be billed back to the developers.
Motion by Phil Williams, second by Nyla Frye. Raise your hand if you have any other comments. Okay, roll call vote, Caitlin.
Erin Moran?
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Kristin Rungy?
Yes.
Phil Random?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have discuss and take action regarding sex offender residency restriction regulations. Who's introducing this one? Brian, are you doing this one, or Todd?
Yeah, Brian and I can it together, and we have Adam Chief Kreitzman on with us too. I'm getting, I'm getting better at saying that, chief. But continued discussion from a month ago, and this was on your agenda. We wanted to bring this back to see whether there were desires of the board to actually make an ordinance change on the subject. I would say from my perspective that as we, the village board, and, and frankly, members of the community came to learn and understand the, what uniquely happened half a year ago, and also what does or doesn't happen now. I think there is greater level of comfort than was being perceived or understood out of the gate half a year ago. So I haven't heard to my office additional requests for this from the public being pursued. And we, we wait, in talking to Brian, we waited a month after the last meeting where we discussed this to sort of afford a chance for it to kind of simmer in the community and see if, if it did bring up additional interest and, and desire from the community, and I have not received any feedback of the sort. And I guess I'd be interested if any board members did as well. Ryan, our chief?
Well, I would, I mean, I would, I would echo what Todd has said. You know, what I reported on the last time this was on the agenda about a month ago is one of the questions that the board had asked was what are other communities in Dane County doing? And as I told you, I had, I had done research of a number of different ordinances for cities and villages in Dane County, and I only ran across two municipalities that have any form of sex offender residency restrictions on the books. Also, in preparation for today's meeting, I actually, and I know Chief Kreitzman, obviously, now, now is the police chief, I did, I did, for what it was worth, I did look back and watch the, the video from the February 17th meeting where, where Chief Plendel and I spoke about this. And I think that goes along, what, what chief said kind of goes along with what Todd said, or Chief Plendel said, was, you know, there was, there was an error that was made back in February, and the Wanakee Police Department was on top of it. And, and through communications with corrections, it was fixed right away. And, and so, you know, one, one of the options for the board certainly is to have some type of ordinance drafted. Another option is, is mainly just, or could be just to have staff continue to monitor this. And if the public were to be contacting Todd or other folks at the police departments, or if other communities in Dane County, for whatever reason, started adopting these ordinances, you know, we'd always have the ability to do that. So even, even if you don't take any action tonight, or you don't ask staff to put together an ordinance, that doesn't mean we can't continue to monitor the situation and see if something were to change in the future that would, would dictate drafting and preparing and adapting an ordinance.
Adam, any additional comments?
No, I, I, I agree. I did reach out to those two jurisdictions. I spoke to, or I emailed a chief from Cottage Grove, said that they have never used their ordinance or had to enforce it, or had any issues with it. I talked to a lieutenant from Sun Prairie, who, which I'm sure Brian could tell you, their, their ordinance is a little bit more in-depth, and he spoke of having a, an appeal committee and, and things of that nature that sound pretty in-depth. They've never gone through the court process to forcefully, forcefully have somebody removed from a residence. They, they don't have a lot of uses for it, but they have used it occasionally. You know, I, I agree that it was a unique situation the last time. We, we did everything we could. We met with the Department of Corrections afterwards to discuss ways that, things we could do if we ever came across that again to get it addressed in a very quickly, in a very quick fashion. You know, I, I agree, it was a unique situation. Prior to that, I think the rules and regulations that the Department of Corrections has in place has worked well for us. That was just, there was an error in there somewhere that last time that, that certainly caused a ruckus, and rightfully so, and it was addressed pretty quickly.
Okay, so I'll open it up to the board members here in a second. I do want to ask one more question. Should, as for all the board members, should we address you, since we haven't officially had this, you know, great meeting altogether, should we address you as chief? Kreitzman, Adam, what would you like us to call you? Types of meetings and situations.
I'm, I'm a pretty, I'm a pretty informal person. I'm fine with Adam.
Okay, what about, what about our attorney? What should he address you as?
I'm, I'm fine with Adam for everybody.
Okay. All right, sounds good. All right, so I'll open it up now for, for questions for everybody. Nyla, any questions in regards to this?
Okay, my thoughts are that we'd be adding unnecessary layers to the situation. And my questions are, what would be really being accomplishing? And my other question is, could there be unforeseen reactions? You know, sometimes you try to do a really good thing and something unforeseen complicates it. So that goes through my mind too. So those, those are the three things I wanted to touch on.
Okay. Kristin Rungy?
I, I feel like we got our questions answered the last time around, and that this extra layer might not be as productive as we would have thought it was.
Erin Moran?
Yeah, I'll echo what they said. I don't think it's the purpose we were looking for, and it, yeah, was mistaken. Everyone followed up, but I hope we can still monitor it, and if, you know, we have this information now, we need to move it forward a little bit.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yeah, I've kind of changed my, my mind on this all, so I think, you know, we've always relied upon our department. They've done a great job, and I don't want to add more layers to a issue, so I'm fine with it right now.
Phil Random?
I think I'm fine with it the way it is.
Phil Williams? Phil, Phil? Phil blink, we might have lost Phil. Okay, I'm, I'm in agreement with all of you at this point. I think it's, it's adding something that may not be as productive as we want it to be. I do like Brian's suggestion that we just continue to monitor this as we move forward. I think corrections has, has this in place. I think our, our, our team has it in place right now that we're in a good spot. You know, we're, I, I think we're doing the right and prudent move by not creating this ordinance. Phil, are you back? Okay, so we don't have Phil. So do we need to have any motions or anything with this, Brian?
No, no motions are necessary. Just, just to kind of, Nyla, you had asked two questions. Is it okay if I try to address those, Chris?
Well, I think they've already been answered previously. I was just going over them again.
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Yep.
Thanks, Brian. Okay, so we don't need to make any motions, so hearing nothing, nothing else, let's just move on. Thank you, Adam, for being here tonight.
Thanks, guys.
Next, we have discuss and take action on proposed creation and grant of covenants between the Village of Wanakee and the United States Army Corps of Engineers for portions of Outlets 1 and 3 of the Golden Ponds addition to Westbridge. Kevin?
Yeah, actually, I'm gonna let.
Before, before you jump in, hey, Chris, I want to get to, do you mind if I jump off the call and jump on with that other group? I think these other items aren't, aren't mine in particular. That be all right?
Is our attorney okay with it?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, then you're good to go. Thank you, Todd. Go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, I was actually going to turn this part over to Brian.
So.
But also, since everybody's picking on the attorney. everybody's picking on the attorney, but we also have the developer on as well. If you've got questions for them and the developer's attorney, and certainly I'm going to be here to answer questions.
Okay, Brian, go ahead.
So yeah, I, I have in front of me, I don't have the ability to share it because that's way beyond my IT skill level, but I do have the agenda packet up for the village board on another screen. And so page 219 is essentially, is, is a map that I think provides a lot of assistance here. And, and really what this comes down to is, and, and certainly Jerry or Don or Mike or Matt may be able to answer this question better, but my understanding is we've been presented with some covenants that would place some restrictions on land that is ultimately going to be dedicated to the village. These covenants are being requested by the Corps of Engineers and they relate to Outlot one and Outlot three of the, the plat. And generically, that's the great, all of the lime green that you see there. And within the plat of Golden Ponds, Outlot one is going to be dedicated to the village for stormwater purposes. And Outlot three is going to be dedicated to the village for park purposes. And I think at a, we generally agree with the concepts identified within the covenants. In other words, we want to protect all of this land as I think, I believe some of it is, is wetland, either wetlands or wetland setback areas. It's an environmental corridor. So, so we agree in concept with the idea of the covenants. And, and so that's why the recommended motion on page 211, 211 would be for the village board to approve them. But we would want them to be subject to final review and approval by the village engineer and the village attorney. We have not yet had a chance to work through with the core on certain terms and conditions. And at high level, basically, we just want to make sure that these covenants, which can be enforced in court by the Corps of Engineers, are not too difficult for the village to satisfy. You know, we certainly already maintain and address land that is dedicated to the village for stormwater purposes and land that is dedicated to the village for park purposes. And we essentially want to make sure that these covenants and, and what we're required to do are consistent with how we handle parks and stormwater elsewhere within the village. And, and so I, I'm certainly able to answer any questions or defer to the developer to, depending on what the question is.
So let's do this, we're going to do two rounds here. I'm going, I'm going to, I know that, I see that Jerry Tierney's on, Don Tierney's on, and Mike Lawton's on. So do we have any questions for any of these individuals? And I'm going to go around the, the group with it. So Gary Hertzberg?
No, I'm good.
Kristen Rungy?
No questions.
Bill Random?
No.
Aaron Moran?
No.
Nala Fry?
Okay. A covenant, does it prevent the creating walkways so that a person who is disabled can get around to the, the fishing pond? Does it create a situation where there can't be parking in the area at all? Because I don't see this, the way it is, as being very accessible.
Now, I can, Chris, you want me to try to answer that?
Well, it was, I mean, I will open it up for Don, Mike and Jerry, but Brian, I think you can answer that one.
Yeah. So if you, if you go to the, that, the map that's on page two, I mean, the, the, the bottom line is the, the areas where we anticipated having paths within the parkland so that individuals could get access to the ponds for fishing purposes, those paths would not be impacted by the covenants. Those paths are all to the south. The, the covenants are essentially, when you look at this map, the red dotted line, and then from that red dotted line to the edge of the plat in each instance. And so the pathways are all south of that red dotted line. And, and so they wouldn't be impacted.
Okay. But my question is, is do they know yet what type of path the red dotted line would be? And if it would be accessible for disabilities?
So, so the red dotted line, it, that, that's not the path itself. The, the path, I believe, is kind of the more gray area right there that Kevin's identifying. The red dotted line is the boundary for the covenant area. So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But so there would be a walking path, but no, but not a place for parking?
I, I'm, I cannot recall what, what, what the Parks Committee had determined with respect to parking, but as long as, as long as the parking would not be inside of the red dotted line, then the covenants would not impact that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Who, Phil Williams?
I have no questions. I think this is going to be a great addition to the village.
Agreed. So do we have somebody that's willing to make the motion?
I make a motion to approve the creation and grant of covenants between the Village of Wannakee and the United States Army Corps of Engineers for portions of Outlets one and three of the plat of Golden Ponds additions to Westbridge, subject to final review and approval by the village engineer and the village attorney.
Okay. Motion by Phil Williams.
Second.
Second by Gary Hertzberg. Can I have everybody back on the screen, please? Thank you. Show of hands. Anybody have any other comments? Okay. He's seeing none. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Phil Williams. Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nala Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Elner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next we have discussion, action on proposed annexation ordinance and annexation agreement for land approximately 1.297 acres owned by Tipperary Farms LLC located at the northeast corner of County Highway Q and Peaceful Valley Parkway. Kevin?
This is for the, the, the small two, the, the existing homes on County Truck Q and Peaceful Valley Parkway are really across the street from SMSM Health. And this is the annex in these two residential properties into the village and included in this is a annexation agreement. Brian, anything else you want to add?
I would just say that the annexation agreement, because of the, the, the size or the lack, I mean, we're dealing with a small parcel here, the annexation agreement is different than what you've seen in the past. It's much shorter. It, it's on, you know, starting on page 222 of your packet. I would say the key aspects of it are because this is an annexation based on Wisconsin statutes, there is a required payment to the town of Westport for five separate years. And as we typically do, we ask the developer to cover that cost and that, that's in the agreements. We have some language in, in the, in the agreement to try to, to address the construction of, of a sidewalk along peace or a path, I'm not sure which, along Peaceful Valley Parkway and, and kind of try to address the zoning and have some, or I'm sorry, the, the timing of that construction. There is some flexibility built into the agreement to try to address that. Last thing I would say is there's, there are two different motions that the village board would need to make on this particular agenda item. Both of the recommended motions are on page 221 of your packet.
Brian, I would just add that the, our plan commission, the joint planning commission, both a recommended approval of the annexation.
Okay. Board members, questions for Kevin or Brian? And we'll start this time with Kristen.
And for me?
Aaron Moran?
No questions.
Phil Williams?
No questions.
Bill Random?
None.
Nala Fry?
No questions.
And my only comment is I'm glad we're getting an island out of the middle of there that it's all Wannakee. So with that, we have two different motions to make. Do we have somebody willing to make those motions?
I approve, or I, I approve the annex, I move that we approve the annexation ordinance conditioned upon execution of the annexation agreement by Tipperary Farms LLC in the village. Can I make both motions at the same time?
One, one, one at a time.
One at a time.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. None. Roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Chris Elner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nala Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And our second motion?
I move to approve the annexation agreement between the village and Tipperary Farms LLC, subject to final review and approval by the village engineer and village attorney.
A motion by Kristen Rungy?
Second.
I, I'm not sure who that was, but I'm going to go with Aaron Moran on this one. Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Phil Williams. Looks like Phil Williams. Aaron Moran.
Hi.
Gary Hertzberg.
Hi.
Nala Fry.
Hi.
Kristen Rungy.
Hi.
Bill Random?
I.
Chris Elner.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Our next item is approve the April 6, 2020, April 8, 2020, and April 20, 2020, village board minutes.
Included in your packet for approval tonight are the board minutes for the meetings Chris, President's owner just stated. They're up for approval. I'll move.
Go ahead.
I'll move. We approve the April 6, 2020, April 8, 2020, and April 20, 2020, village board minutes.
Second.
Aaron Moran? Second by, was that Kristen? Second by Kristen Rungy? Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, roll call vote, Caitlin.
Nala Fry.
abstain.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Elner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And one final motion?
Move it, Jen.
Motion by Bill Random.
Second.
Second by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Caitlin.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Nala Fry.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Bill Random.
Yes.
Chris Elner.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Aaron Moran.
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Be safe. Enjoy the weather. Enjoy being outside. Talk to you later.